Call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yeah.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Conley.
Present.
Counselor Consalvo.
Present.
Counselor Jackson. Counsel Lamatina.
Yeah.
Counsel Linehan.
Yeah.
Counsel Murphy.
Here.
Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
Counsel Presley. Counsel Ross.
Yeah.
And Counsel Yancy.
I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all counselors and all guests to please rise at this time.
Dr. Pressley.
As I have the honor to introduce my friend and colleague, City Councilor Salvatore Lamatina, who will introduce Father Pat Universal from St. Stephen's Church in the North End, who will deliver our invocation for today's meeting. After Father Pat delivers the invocation, I would ask all to remain standing as Counsel Lamatina leads us in a pledge of allegiance. Counsel Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to be able to introduce Father Pat Universal from St. Stephen's Church in the North End. Many of you might know St. Stephen's Church on Hanover Street. It's the church where Rose Kennedy was baptized and her funeral was at. And Father Universal is the Assistant Director of the St. James Society, which is based in St. Stephen's Church. It's a missionary started and founded by Colonel Cushing. And what they do, they do a lot of work in Latin America and South America. And during his many years working for his influences, he spent 25 years working with Navajo and Apache Indians in New Mexico and Arizona. And for the last six years, he's with us. And we're very happy to have him. Father Universal also helps out all throughout the city of Boston with his Spanish masses. In this time of reflection, where the whole world has been watching the terrible attacks on our beloved Boston, and at this first council meeting since the terror, I would like to thank Father Pat and welcome him as we regain our sense of composure as sharp grieving and a prayerful Bostonians, united in strength, together as one, and Boston, a strong Boston. Father, welcome.
Almighty God, we gather here in this chamber as the representatives of the people of the city of Boston. We come together as their elected representatives, as councilmen and women. Help us, we pray, to live in peace and tranquility. Help us to learn to live in ways which promote justice, compassion, and peace among us all. Help us, Lord, to legislate laws for the betterment of our city. Help us never to forget the responsibilities our office places upon us. Guide us in remembering that we must deliberate carefully and judiciously to make the best decisions for the common good of all the people of Boston. Give us the courage, wisdom, and good judgment to serve all within our city, the rich, the poor, the undocumented, the elderly, the young, and all the citizens who work hard and come together to make our city strong. In these recent days, God, our city has been put to the test. We have experienced needless and senseless violence and tragic loss of life. But we have never lost our spirit or our faith. Thank you, God, for the leadership of our mayor and city counselors and grant them a continued resolute spirit of service and dedication so that our city will remain a great city so that we may continue to serve as the light upon the hill for all to see and be proud of, to inspire and to give thanks to all the communities around this nation who stood beside us and supported us, and to always give thanks to you, God, for all the blessings you have bestowed upon the great city of Boston. Amen.
Thank you, Father Pat, for your inspiring message. Please join us as Counsel Lamatina leads us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God and visible for the reading of justice for all.
Counsel Lamatina will escort the clergy from the chamber. Madam Clerk, we've been joined by Counsel Presley since the roll call. Minute to amend the roll call. There are no changes to be made. The minutes from the last meeting shall stand approved. Seeing and hearing no changes, those minutes of Madam Clerk are approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read all of the... I stand corrected. We have two presentations this morning. I asked Counsel Conley to come forward. He is. And allow him to make the first of two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd call Counsel O'Malley and Counsel Baker as well as Counsel President Murphy here. And I'd call down if the big band from Boston Latin can come on down and the county school band can come on down here and Mr. Pitts and Mr. Chu and everyone, come on and join us down here. That'd be great. Come on up. Come on up, guys. Everybody squeeze in. Squeeze in, guys. Come on right, fill in. So everybody just squeeze right in up here. One big happy family. All right, today, we just had some phenomenal music performances in the Piemonte Room by the two bands that we're honoring today and that we're so very proud of, both Boston Public School bands. And we're recognizing some outstanding student musicians from across our city. They're in different places in their musical careers, but all have demonstrated a love for music and a dedication to their craft and really make us proud to know of their excellent work in our Boston Public Schools. On the weekend of Sunday, February 17th, the top six high school big bands from across the entire country gathered in New York for the nationwide Charles Mingus High School Competition and Festival at the Manhattan School of Music. Boston Latin School walked away with top honors for best big band in the non-specified category. Let's give them a big round of applause. You should have heard them play in the Piemonte Room. They were incredible. The judges there considered rhythm, improvisation, interpretation, musicianship, and Mingus spirit in their evaluations. The competition was only part of the great things that happened that weekend. Students got to see the Mingus Big Band perform live on Saturday night at the Jazz Standard in Manhattan. And they attended a jazz clinic at Lincoln Center with a surprise visit by Winston Marsalis, who worked with the BLS Big Band. So imagine that opportunity as a high school musician. And so at this point, I'd like to have Counsel O'Malley and Counsel Murphy, Boston Latin School alums, present recognition to Mr. Pitts, the big band leader.
Thank you, John. John went to the other Latin school, the side that, the school that sided with the British back in the Revolutionary War, just to be clear. So I was just saying, I was just saying, as we left the Piemonte Room and walked back over here, saying to Counsel Baker, this is among the best parts of the job, to see these young people just beginning their music career, already showing such talent, and to see these teenagers who have been working tirelessly under the direction of people like Paul Pitts and so many other wonderful teachers. It's just remarkable. The talent, the love, the energy is really what I know motivates so many of us to do the job. I'd also like to acknowledge we've been joined by Angela Cristiani with the Boston Teachers Union, who I know is an accomplished artist in her own right. But just wanted to thank you, John, for putting this together and for recognizing these great folks. I'm going to begin along with the council president naming the Latin School Big Band. Special recognition should be afforded to Willens Jean Jules, who won an outstanding trumpet. And we saw why in there, so. So I will read one resolution, and then we'll go through, I guess, the names briefly. It's, "Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Boston Latin School Big Band in recognition of your incredible performance that garnered the Best Big Band Award in the 2013 Charles Mingus High School Competition and Festival and an acknowledgement of your dedication to the values of teamwork, academic rigor, discipline, and perseverance. So therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations for your tremendous accomplishments and offers its best wishes for continued success. That this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston." And I'll begin some of the names in the council president. Harry Shu, John Baranus, Jasper Schilling, Jamie Monahan, Anthony Ardario, Willens Jean Jules, Kalij Shmarca, Daniel Cushing, Jeremy Link.
Kevin Zhang, Daniel Hines, Hong Yi Ren, Trevor O'Brien, Sam Sano, Eugia Song, Charles Vedala, Robert Carney, Elime Dehal, Dan Winshaw, Kevin Shui. Chu. What did I do? Almost.
Better than me.
Almost. It's just a great pleasure to be here with Boston Latin School, once again, leading the way in the whole country. And as a proud Latin School alum, I'd say thank you and congratulations to these young men and women. Thank you.
Let's give them one more big round of applause there. We have one more excellent band to honor here today. Before that, I'd just like to take a moment to note that I think General Joseph Warren, a general in the Revolutionary Army, a great patriot and former headmaster of the Roxbury Latin School, would take umbrage with Counsel O'Malley's prior remarks. And that would be the Joseph Warren for whom Warren Avenue is named. And perhaps you skipped history class at Boston Latin, Counsel O'Malley.
All right. We are also joined today by the only, the only elementary school marching band in the Boston Public Schools, and that is the Thomas J. Kenny Elementary School Band. They were awesome in performing just before we began the meeting. And for those who listened, I will just say their percussion section really brings it home. They were awesome. And you've probably seen them. They perform at First Night. You'll see them in the Dorchester Day Parade, the Roselandale Day Parade. You'll see them around the city. We take great pride in knowing that the Kenny Band is out there doing us proud. And these young musicians, you can see today that their hard work and commitment to music will definitely lead them to an even bigger stage someday, much like our guests from the Latin School Big Band have experienced. So I'd like to bring Counsel Baker up to present the resolution to Director Jerry Chu of the Kenny School Band.
Thank you, John. I'll have no history lessons today, okay? If that's all right with people. One of the things, Matt had touched on it a little bit. One of the things that we're able to do in our job is when young people do good things, we're able to recognize them and build their self-esteem and let them know how special they are. So right now, I'd like to read a resolution to Jerry Chu. Official resolution. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Director Jerry Chu in recognition of your leadership of the Thomas J. Kenny Elementary School Marching Band, the only elementary school marching band in the Boston Public Schools, in appreciation of your love for music and guidance of your students, development of teamwork, academic rigor, discipline, and perseverance. So therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations for your tremendous accomplishments and offers its best wishes to continued success. That this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to in a copy therefore transmitted to the clerk of the city of Boston, sponsored by John R. Conley, Stephen J. Murphy, Frank Baker, and Matt O'Malley. Thank you.
We have Mr. Pitts and Mr. Chu say a few words, and then colleagues come up for a photo.
I can say that I really have the love for the kids to be successful. Happy how I see the children shine every day when they go out and perform. And just having your support makes us want to go play more. Right, kids?
Yeah.
So thank you for having us. And we're back out there with about another four parades for the community. And we just love doing it. So thank you.
I'd just like to thank all the members of the city council and President Mr. Conley for their support of the Boston Public Schools. It's a great place to work. And the school that I work at is exceptional in that the kids that we have are just fantastic kids. They work hard. They do a lot of homework. We have a lot of practicing, but they keep coming through. It's been a great year. And they're great kids. It's a great place to work, great city to live in. And it'll be great in the future. So thank you.
Now, Matt, do we want to give these to Paul Pitts? I want to thank Counsel John Conley, Counsel Matt O'Malley, and Counsel Frank Baker, and the bands from the Thomas Kenny School and Boston Latin School. Congratulations on your awards. Thank you. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the mayor. And if you could read all of the 53 and 1/2 established.
Docket number 0670, message and order authorizing the public schools to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $1,800,000 to support the maintenance and repair of Boston Public School facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extending building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Docket number 0671, message and order authorizing public schools to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept the fund up to $1,500,000 to repair and purchase both Boston Public School computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. Docket number 0672, message and order authorizing the Police Licensing Division to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $350,000 for new Hackney driver applicants. Docket number 0673, message and order authorizing Mayor's Office of Arts Tourism Special Events to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $300,000 to purchase goods and services to support cultural, artistic, and community events throughout the city of Boston. Docket number 0674, message and order authorizing the Boston Police Academy to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept funds up to a maximum of $200,000 for officers from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agencies, police officer training purposes. Docket number 0675, message and order authorizing the Boston Fire Academy to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept up to a maximum of $200,000 to support training programs for firefighters from non-city-of-Boston fire agencies. Docket number 0676, message and order authorizing the Fire Department Academy to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $150,000 to support Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release Prevention and Response Act. Docket number 0677, message and order authorizing the public schools to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $125,000 for transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. Docket number 0678, message and order authorizing the Police Department Special Operations Division to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to support the K-9 units' training programs for officers and police dogs from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agencies. Docket number 0679, message and order authorizing the Fire Department Academy to reestablish in accordance with mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $20,000 to support Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release Prevention and Response Act.
Docket 0670 through 0679 will be referred to Committee on Ways and Means, Reports of Public Officers and Others.
Docket number 0680, communication was received from the city clerk regarding the spring 2013 university accountability statistical report.
Docket 0680 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0681, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Marlena Richardson as a member of the Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1st, 2014.
Docket 0681 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0682, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Mary White as a member of the Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1st, 2014.
Docket 0682 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0683, communication was received from Daniel J. Green Esquire, Executive Director, appointment of Thomas V. J. Jackson to the fifth seat on the Boston Retirement Board for a term expiring on January 15th, 2015.
Docket 0683 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0415, order for hearing to discuss feasibility of using payment collection kiosks to collect certain payments in the city of Boston.
Docket 0415 remains in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0590, order for hearing regarding the use of performance measures throughout city government. Docket number 0593, order for hearing to discuss the city's revolving funds as the development of an annual revolving fund approval process for the city.
Docket 0590 and 0593, she recognizes City Council Mark Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing on Monday. Devin Quirk, who is the Performance Manager for the city of Boston, testified about the Boston About Results. Since 2007, Boston About Results has appeared in our budget books under the various departments. So it has evolved a lot since then. Now it's actually online. Forty-four departments update those performance evaluations quarterly. So anyone can go online. Uh, the purpose of the hearing was to formalize, uh, the process by which we review each department and their performance in, you know, in short, uh, it asks three basic questions. Uh, what does city government do? How well are we doing it? And how can we do it better? So, this will be, uh, an opportunity for all of us to look at the, the way each department reviews its own performance, uh, hopefully enhances efficiencies. Uh, Meredith testified about the revolving funds. Uh, we just established a new revolving fund out on City Hall Plaza last year. Once again, this is, uh, our attempt to, uh, create more transparency for all these revolving funds. They will be reviewed in the context of each department. There are currently 10 revolving funds, uh, three, uh, each in, uh, Police Department, Fire Department, um, I'm sorry, Education, BPS, and then Arts and Tourism for the City Hall Plaza. So, this, again, they will all be voted, uh, voted for individually, the revolving funds, and this just creates the context by which we, we review this as part of the Ways and Means process. And there's also, uh, a communication that, uh, spells this out as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ciomo. Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. I commend the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, um, for conducting these hearings. I was unable to attend the discussion on the revolving loan fund, but, uh, through you, Mr. President, I would like the Chair to, uh, let us know whether each of these revolving funds will be subjected to an annual audit, uh, prior to the City Council taking any action.
In fact, prior to every budget hearing, we're going to get a, uh, a fact sheet on each one that will outline the details of the, the sources of revenue and the expenditures for each revolving fund and those parameters. So, we will be getting that information in advance of every hearing. I hope that answers the question.
Uh, Mr. President, maybe it wasn't clear enough. Uh, the question was about audited financial statements for each of these revolving funds. Would that be a part of the submittal when a request is made to reestablish on an annual basis?
Yeah, I, I really can't answer if they're audited. I would assume they are audited as part of all the, the, uh, budgets that go through the city of Boston. Uh, we will do our own review. Uh, I don't know if I can get that question answered right now, uh, as far as, uh, talking about like KPM, uh, KMPG.
CPA audit.
Right. Now, you know that none of these, just to, to be clear, none of these individual, uh, budgets exceeds like 1.8 million, just to let you know. Combined, it's a $4 million expenditure by the 10 revolving funds, but I'll try to get that answer about the audit.
590 and 593 will be placed on file at this point in time. Um, Madam Clerk, docket 0340.
Docket 0340, message and ordinance amending city of Boston Code, Chapter 7, Section 7-2 of the city of Boston Code, Air Pollution Control Commission. The proposed amendment to Section 7-2 will require property owners and tenants to report annual and energy use data to the Air Pollution Control Commission, and require the commission to establish the procedures and mechanisms necessary for such reporting, to enforce this requirement through fines and to disclose reported data to the public.
Chair recognizes City Council Matt O'Malley on docket 0340.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, just briefly, folks, I wanted to touch upon what is happening. This is the Energy Reporting Disclosure Ordinance. We held a hearing on March 28th, uh, then two subsequent working sessions, one on April 9th and one yesterday, April 23rd. Uh, this is a good piece of legislation. This is an ordinance that I support. I want to publicly thank the great work that's been done by the administration, by folks from the industry, by many of you who have been working to try to find some common ground. Um, it's far, it's no secret that energy use in buildings accounts for 75% of gases that cause climate change, and reducing these gas emissions is something that we all share. People with every opinion on this issue share that. So, it comes down to the question, what's the best way to do it? I think this ordinance makes sense. Uh, it's something that I do support. I'm very grateful for the opportunity that we were able to find some new common ground, and you all should have received this packet. If you haven't, uh, let central staff know on the nine changes that have been made most recently. Uh, the, number one is that tenants and condo owners will no longer be required to report energy usage to a landlord or management company. This removes the burden and fines placed on a tenant and condo owner. Uh, and I did want to thank Counselor Mike Ross, who I know has been working hard, uh, for his work, uh, on that. There are eight other, uh, changes that have been made. Take a look at it. Today, I'm going to call for a, uh, vote to reject this without prejudice. It will be reintroduced at next Wednesday's council meeting. I will be calling for a vote the following Wednesday. Again, I'm ready to vote for this. I would vote for this today. I've talked to some of you. I know there's some concern, you want to figure some more things out, read it, it's a lengthy bill, you have some other issues that want to be addressed. Work with the administration. Brian Swett has done yeoman's work with this. This may come down to just a fundamental disagreement, you don't believe that we should have these, uh, this ordinance in place, and that's fine, that's your position, that's, that's, we are elected to make the right votes, or make the tough votes. I think the right vote is to pass this, but out of deference to make sure that we can find some more common ground, figure out ways that people are more comfortable with this, address any outstanding questions or concerns, I want this to pass 13 to nothing. So, I want to give you guys an additional time to find that out. It's a 60-day order, we have to take action today. That's why it's a reject, I'm calling for rejection without prejudice, but once again, this isn't looking to kick this down. I want to get this done. I want the administration to be able to start implementation of this. This really makes sense. Boston will be joining with San Francisco, with New York, with Seattle, with so many other cities, uh, around, seven of the largest cities around the country, to do our part to reduce, uh, gas emission. And when you think about it, and, and I know a lot of people have different opinions on this, but you think about when you buy a, a freezer now with the energy saver, you know, you're going to look for something that's energy efficient. When we buy cars now, there is a MPG sticker on the side of the car, so we know what can make sense. Now, it doesn't mean that everyone buys a Prius or a hybrid or an electric vehicle, but I'll tell you what happens. Other cars then are made, uh, more energy efficient. You've got cars, you've got SUVs that are now more energy efficient than they were even five years ago in being developed. So, that's the, the, what we're seeing. This ordinance helps do, helps to do that. Uh, again, I don't want to bore you with more information on this, but so, please read the bill and follow up with the administration with any questions, because so much has been accounted for. This isn't about punitive, this isn't about punishing people or collecting fines, this is about making sure that we can have and collect information and share it, uh, and really help lessen our reliance in, in our, um, greenhouse gas emissions. So, two more weeks, we will be voting two weeks from today on this issue. I will be calling for a, uh, a vote then. Please take this time to answer any questions, do some more research, talk to people, work with the administration, we'll get it done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, at this time moves acceptance of the committee report and rejection without prejudice of docket 0340. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Oppose. Um, the motion carries, the matter is rejected without prejudice. Madam Clerk, docket 0610 through 630.
Docket number 0610 through 0630, orders.
That's the budget, right? The operating and capital budgets, which will remain in committee of Ways and Means. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Motion, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0684, Counselor Murphy and Linehan offered the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding eligibility for cooperative housing corporations.
The Chair recognizes Counsel President Murphy.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. You know, we have, um, federal fair housing laws, which apply to single-family, two-family, uh, multiple condos, but one gray area, uh, that these federal housing laws don't apply as accurately to our cooperative housing, and that is because cooperative housing, you don't own the unit in a building, uh, with cooperative housing, you own a percentage of stock in the entire building. So, you might occupy a certain unit, but under the makeup of cooperative housing, if there are 10 units and you own one of them, you really own 10% of the full structure. And they're headed by boards, and those boards can skirt fair housing laws, and we saw that, um, a couple of years ago with a fellow by the name of John Walsh, who tried to buy a, uh, percentage of a building, uh, at the bottom of Beacon Hill, and was rejected by the co-op board for reasons that were outside of, um, fair housing guidelines. And this particular home rule petition would merely close that loophole, require those boards to play fair. So, I've, uh, filed it with, uh, the support of Counsel Linehan, and I know others have met with John Walsh here, and, um, he was discriminated against, um, in his attempt to buy a house in a building that he wanted to buy a house in. And that doesn't happen in this country these days. So, this is closing that loophole, and I hope we'll all join together and send this to Beacon Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan.
Yeah, uh, thank you, and, uh, it's, uh, it's an honor and, uh, and a privilege to, uh, to sign on with Counselor Murphy on this matter. You know, when we talked to Mr. Walsh and, uh, and his supporters, he, it was actually like he was not allowed in the country club, that they, the board and the ownership of the board of, of the, um, uh, the principals, uh, of that, of the building, just decided that he could not be part of them. They didn't, they didn't like how much money he made, they didn't, he didn't fit in their social criteria, he had different, uh, political views, and, and those were the sorts of things that were, were discussed about whether he could buy, you know, ownership in, into the cooperative. So, I, I think this is a very important and significant, um, uh, special, uh, special law that we, um, that we, we're putting, uh, out front here, and, uh, I hope we all get up to speed and, um, and will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman. I did meet with Mr. Walsh, as I assume most of our colleagues, and I was, uh, really outraged with the blatant, uh, discrimination against, uh, Mr. Walsh. Uh, it wasn't based on his ability to, to pay, it was based on other considerations that I think are far outmoded for the 21st century. Uh, Mr. President, I certainly want to sign on, but would ask that we have a hearing on it, uh, because it, it does expose some very critical and serious issues of, uh, basic justice and human rights. In my discussion with Mr. Walsh and his representatives, I was concerned that their request was far too modest. Uh, their concern was not that discrimination was taking place, it was that the discrimination wasn't disclosed. And I think we should go a step further, Mr. President, so hopefully with your consent, uh, we can have a public hearing on this, and I, in the meantime, I would like to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add the name of Counselor Charles Yancey. Please also add the name Counselor Sal Lamatina, Tito Jackson, Ayana Presley, Matt O'Malley, Mark Ciomo, Frank Baker, Felix Arroyo, Rob Consalvo. And that matter will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0685, Counselor Yancey offered the following order for hear, for hearing on improving low perform, on improving low performing in Boston Public Schools and providing equitable access to higher performing schools in Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will refer our colleagues to the actual, uh, hearing order, request for hearing order. There were some, uh, typos in the, on the agenda. Uh, Mr. President, the school committee recently passed a new school assignment plan called, uh, Home Based A, uh, which is a very interesting, uh, logarithm with regards to student assignment. What the school committee has yet to do is to indicate how that new assignment plan has an impact on the access gap and the achievement gap, uh, in the city of Boston. So, the purpose of this hearing is to discern what that impact will be. I want publicly acknowledge the work of, uh, Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts and other advocates who's expressed some very grave concerns about a perpetuation of the achievement gap, uh, as one of the unintended consequences of, um, the revised assignment plan. Uh, everyone of, every member of the Boston City Council is committed to justice and human rights and full access and reducing the achievement gap, and we need to know what that imp, what the impact of the new assignment plan will be on the achievement gap. So, I ask that it be referred to the appropriate committee for an expeditious hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Docket 0685 will be referred to Committee on Education. Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson to sign on. Please add the name of Counselor Tito Jackson. Please also add the name of Counselor Ayana Presley. And that matter will be referred to Committee on Education.
Docket number 0686, Counsel Arroyo offered the following order for hearing on developing a mandatory financial literacy class for Boston Public High School students.
Chair recognizes Counsel Felix Arroyo on docket 0686.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. You know, this, this is a thought I've had for a while, uh, because I think about myself when I graduated, uh, high school and really my first day on the college campus, I was, uh, immediately enticed to sign up for a credit card. Uh, it, literally the first day I was in school, so I did, uh, and I regretted it. Um, I think it's important, and I think all of us would agree, as we deal with a $2.6 billion budget, some understanding of finances is necessary for us to do our own job. Yet, while, the, while it's included in the statewide standards for K-12 in Massachusetts, there's no obligation for the districts to offer financial literacy or finance. Uh, and so, what happens is some do, some don't, some schools do, some schools don't. Sometimes it's an elective, sometimes it's mandatory. It is my position that financial literacy should be mandatory. According to Council of Economic Education survey of the states of 2011, only 14 states require personal finance course to be offered, which is one fewer than 2009. Yet, President Obama declared April as National Financial Capability Month, with a focus on understanding finance and basic financial planning. Think about all the things that we deal with every day in adulthood. Interest rates, usury rates, mortgage rates, adjustable rate mortgage, credit scores, how to maintain a good credit score, debt service, basic financial planning. How about when taxes are due and how to do them? Uh, and then think about what our goal is for all of our graduates from the Boston Public Schools. The goal is that all who desire to go to, uh, college can do so. Yet, immediately when you enter college, and we know this to be true, student loans for many of those, those of us who are lucky enough to go to college and many who will be entering college, student loans and, and debt as a result of student loans is a very real reality. And we're not teaching them in high school how to manage that debt and what smart debt looks like, what debt service is, and how to plan your life financially. And so, it is my hope, uh, that we could do the hearing, uh, soon, uh, and with the hopes of working with the administration, um, on where is finance and financial literacy being offered now? And my hopes, the leading to this to be a mandatory, uh, class for requirement, uh, graduation requirement for all of our Boston Public School students, that we know when they enter adulthood, when they enter the work world, when they go off to college, uh, that they have a basic sense of how to do financial planning, um, because we all know how important that is, uh, for our future, uh, as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. On that matter, docket 0686, hold on, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Presley, Counselor O'Malley, all want to sign on to that? And docket 0686 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0687, Counsel Murphy for Counselor Yancey offered the following order for an appointment of temporary employee.
Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0687. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
All those in favor say aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. Docket 0687 has passed.
Docket number 0688, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Ciomo offered the following order.
Counsel Ciomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0688. All those in favor say aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. Docket 0688 has passed.
Docket 0689, Counsel Murphy for Counsel Linehan.
Counsel Linehan moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0689. All those in favor say aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. Docket 0689 has passed. The clerk informs me that there are six late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing, no objection, the matters are added. The clerk will read the first edition to the agenda.
Order of Council President Stephen J. Murphy, an order for hearing regarding solutions to unfunded pension liability. Do you want me to read the entire?
No, no. Counsel Lamatina to the podium. We're going into the beginning of a budget season again, and our Veteran Ways and Means Chair is leading the council. And one of the big topics at the beginning of this process every year is the unfunded pension liability and even greater unfunded OPEB liability that the city faces. And we have, all of us have been part of a team with Mayor Menino that have led this city to new heights in terms of financial responsibility, all at a time when the national and world economy has gone in the other direction. And we've all been saying, in conversations with one another, with the administration, that, you know, the day of reckoning is coming. We put $40 or $50 million a year into a trust fund every year for OPEB accounts. We continue to catch up on our funding, our liability for our pension, but that work still eludes us. And, you know, we always talk about how much of a percentage of our budget goes to non-programmatic needs, that's feeding those beasts, feeding pensions, feeding healthcare, and it's up to 14, almost 15%, 15 cents on every dollar the city takes in now goes out of departmental sources to feed those needs. And I was thinking about a month ago, you know, I'm recently married and there's an age difference at our house, and I'm on the losing end of that age difference, so I'm thinking about getting life insurance. And I get life insurance, which I almost needed last Monday when a few of us were down on Boylston Street, but what happened to my finances when I got the life insurance was my assets went up. There's not just an asset of how much money you have in a bank, there's human capital, there's human assets. And, you know, there are two certainties in life, someone said in the 1800s, death and taxes. And each and every one of us has been taxed, and each and every one of us at some point in time is going to cease to exist, we're going to die. And that revelation, I guess, led me to think about how can the city close the gap on what our material assets are with regard to pensions, unfunded pensions and OPEB, and what it could be. So I did a little actuarial table myself, and if every person who's under collective bargaining agreement, no change to agreement, no change with the unions, had a $250,000 life insurance policy on them, the city's collective assets would go from $4.7 billion to $7.4 billion. And that's hard numbers, those are accounting standards by GASBY, Government Accounting Standards Bureau. The city's assets, the human assets, would be factored in. So in proceeding, you know, I've talked to people in the financial industry and in the insurance industry, and there are players out there that are buying insurance policies on people and holding them. And when they buy an insurance policy, that money gets transferred over on the books to us being a city asset, and it funds the unfunded liability without new taxes, without more expenses coming from city residents. So this order is a hearing to ask our CFO and our Treasury people, come down to see if the city of Boston can't take advantage of GASBY accounting standards and insurance to use that vehicle to close those gaps, because those gaps are there now, and as accounting standards change, our lack of fulfilling the liabilities are going to drastically impact our bond rating and our other financial tools that we've worked so hard to create, protect, and defend. And they're going to impact the ability of this city to operate. So this is a hearing to see if we can use this type of a system to help calculate our way out of our web that we've, none of us have, it's been foisted upon us from years and years and years. So I just look for a appropriate quick hearing in Ways and Means to see if we can join this party. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please assign it to Ways and Means. Should we go? Is there any more late files? The Chair recognizes President Murphy on your resolution. Do you want to read the resolution?
No.
If you don't, okay.
You have to read the, not the whole thing, but...
We could just read it in.
No.
Yes.
City of Boston, in the City Council, resolution of Council President Stephen J. Murphy. Whereas the Boston Marathon finish line was targeted by terrorists on Monday, April 15th, 2013, whereas over 180 injuries and three deaths occurred due to the coordinated detonation of two improvised explosive devices, IEDs, in the midst of a crowd of onlookers and marathon runners. And whereas the law enforcement community, led by the Boston Police Department, Massachusetts State Police, Federal Bureau of Investigation, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, the Joint Terrorism Task Force, were quickly and efficiently to investigate the crime scene and capture the suspects. And whereas an area consisting of 15 city blocks surrounding the finish line was cordoned off and designated a crime scene, whereas one of Boston's most thriving business districts, the Boylston Back Bay Business District, was paralyzed for nine days by this designation. And whereas the economic toll on each of these small businesses is extreme, given to the high rents and commercial rates paid to lease our own real estate in this area. And whereas Boston has begun the physical and psychological healing process already, but the economic impact to many of these businesses and employees in the Boylston Back Bay Business District has yet to be measured. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council, in meeting assembled, do hereby urge residents and visitors to support these businesses by shopping at the affected stores and inquire with local business owners how residents and visitors may aid these businesses or help employees by urging family and friends to do the same. That this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to the copy thereof transmitted to the clerk of the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counsel President Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, I don't know, I know that there were four members of the council down in that vicinity on Monday, yourself, Counsel Ross, Counsel Linehan, and myself. I don't know if anybody else was right nearby. I was 50 feet from the first blast when it happened. I think you and Counsel Ross were close to the second blast when it occurred. But, you know, it was great work, quick work by our police department. Never so proud as a Bostonian to see our, first of all, our first responders, EMS, fire, rushing into the scene as controlled chaos took over. But then the teamwork and the effort that was placed on identifying and bringing these suspects to justice by our own police department, our own commissioner and our own police department in conjunction with those other agencies. The people who did this did it at such a time and place to inflict maximum amount of physical and psychological damage to this city and its people. And, you know, we persevered and we did well, we're a resilient city. But there was also an economic fallout of an area that is one of our better business districts, and that economic fallout continued until yesterday when some of the shop owners were allowed back in. And if you're paying commercial rents or you're being commercially taxed on square footage in that area, you could be paying for a small shop $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 a month, and to have nine days of inactivity go on because it was a quote "crime scene" is a crime as well. And I and others on the body feel that as part of the healing process for the city, we should uplift those businesses and uplift that business district and go in there and spend our money and encourage others to do so, because the physical trauma is over, psychological trauma may never be over for those of us who lived it, but the economic trauma continues. And I'm urging all of my colleagues to join me in this effort. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counsel Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the whole episode brought this city together in such a way that we all cannot, and we have to be proud of this city, neighbor and business helping stranger, Back Bay residents opening up their doors, handing out all their clothing to cold runners as they stop by, business community offering shelter for other business community. The Prudential Center, the marketing office of the Prudential Center, run by the Boston Properties, Brian Coop, opened up that marketing center so that some of the affected offices could actually work off the back edge of that marketing center. Hotels, carting food and pushing it across the city to their competitors so that they could continue to operate. Businesses not charging for all their items that were in the affected area. And countless emails from people across the country saying, "This year, I'm coming to the Back Bay." So it's in that spirit of coming together that we here on the Boston City Council need to come together. And as the person who represents this district and has spent the better part of this week out in that community trying to work with my colleagues in my office, Sarah Hinton, who's doing yeoman's work, working with Sheila Dillon and her team to try to help bring the Back Bay business community together, working with Meg Meiser Cohen from the Back Bay Association, as well as the Newbury Street League, working with the affected store owners. Many of you met Colin Petty, the owner of Marathon Sports, who came with us to President Obama's prayer service at the cathedral. I would have liked to have been included on this resolution. I have resolutions of my own. I think it's too early and too soon to put them out. There will be a lot of time for our resolving, but I think it's a little early right now to be doing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Jackson.
I'd like to thank the President for putting this forward. I actually did an event the Friday prior to the marathon, right at 655 Boylston Street. In the worst of times, I think we saw some of the best things that I've ever seen about our city, things that I think we all intuitively know about one another and know about our community, but we got to see humanity and got to see the city of Boston come together in a way that, again, we know has been there. I think on Facebook and other places, we've seen folks say, "You messed with the wrong city. You messed with the wrong people." And that's very true. The Harvest, post 390, gave away free food. There were people who stopped and gave help to runners, people who took money out of their own pockets, people who handed folks their cell phone. And so, again, as the Council President brought up, there is also the reality that there are businesses in that area that we want to stay open, and that would be an additional loss if any of those businesses were to shutter based on this. And I was on Saturday, actually on Sunday, I was on Newbury Street, and there was a feeling kind of that you're not going to keep us in the house, and you're not going to keep us away from our city. And so I think I stand in unity and solidarity with both of you. And I want to thank Counsel Ross for the great representation, the great work that his office is doing. I also want to thank all of the folks, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Emergency Medical Services. I also want to thank the mayor's staff. I had an opportunity to be at that 6354500 number. I want folks to know that that number is not some outsourced center. There were people who were there all night, taking calls to connect people with their families, and that actually happened in this building with real people who work for the city of Boston. Again, this is one of the most difficult, hardest, worst times, but we've seen the best of our city, the best of the people of our city come out. And so I really appreciate what the President is doing on our behalf, and I would like to have my name at it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Yancey.
Thank you very much. I too like to commend the maker of this resolution. I think it is timely, and I think we should encourage everyone from the city of Boston and from Massachusetts and indeed from around the world to go all of their way, to go to Boylston Street and go to the areas around the Prudential Center to try to give an economic boost to those businesses that suffered the economic loss. Mr. Vice Chair, I also, like everyone here, was devastated by what happened last Monday. Dorchester lost their little boy, as you know, and there were losses throughout the region, not just loss of life, but loss of limb, loss of psychological well-being. And it's very important that we return to some sense of normalcy. So I want to obviously, like each and every one of you, thank EMS, the Boston Police Department, the Fire Department, who ran into harm's way when everyone else was trying to escape it without knowing when and if the next bomb was going to go off. They demonstrate great courage, great compassion, and selflessness that epitomize most of our public servants. I'm very, like everyone here, very proud of them. I also want to take this opportunity to thank President Barack Obama for his very speedy response to our crisis. I want to thank Governor Deval Patrick for his great leadership, and of course, our beloved mayor, who literally got out of his hospital bed to make sure that his city and our city was properly cared for in this moment of crisis. All of them, all levels of government and the leaders of each level of government deserve our support because they went beyond the call of duty, and we are in their debt. So we were devastated, it's true, but we were not defeated. So we were devastated, it's true, but we were not defeated. Thank you. And I'd like to sign on.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please sign on Counsel Yancey, Counsel Lenihan, Counsel Jackson, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Lamatina, Counsel Consalvo, Counsel Presley, Counsel Ross, Counsel Baker. Thank you. Personnel matters.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Conley. That effect?
Counsel Conley moves suspension of the rules in passage of the personnel order. All those in favor, say aye. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules in passage, the order. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Order is passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Presley.
Counsel Presley moves suspension of the rules in passage of the personnel order. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Personnel order has passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Siomo. Order that effective Saturday, April 20th.
Counsel Siomo moves suspension of the rules in passage of the third late-file personnel order. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Late-file order has passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Arroyo. Offered...
Counsel Arroyo moves suspension of the rules in passage of the fourth late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Fourth late-file matter has passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel Arroyo. Order that effective Saturday...
Counsel Arroyo moves suspension of the rules, passage of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The fifth late-file matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing no takers. Chair recognizes Counsel Mike Ross.
Mr. President, I'd like to have the clerk read docket 0498 of page 8 of 16.
In the Committee on Public Safety, docket number 0498, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend an FY 2009 to 2010 Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of providing funding to port areas and the protection of critical port infrastructure from terrorism.
Chair recognizes Counsel Mike Ross on docket 0498.
Mr. President, the matter should have been distributed in new draft. This matter did not have a hearing. The hearing was scheduled for Friday. Friday, we all know what happened on Friday. And then, of course, with Ways and Means scheduling and et cetera, we were not able to have the hearing. So I will be asking my colleagues to support this today because the window for passing this matter, which we, excuse me, one second, which we received relatively recently, closes before our next meeting. So what this is, is two boats that will be used in Boston Harbor that can inspect both low water and deeper water targets and sites and go under and traverse bridges throughout the Four Point Channel and throughout the harbor area. I've been in receipt of many documents that are piled on my desk and I've reviewed them just as recently as a couple of minutes ago in terms of the materials in the bidding. We've also sent around to my colleagues a few pages on the two boats that we're looking at. So this is going from a $753,000 request to now a $499,000 request in new draft, which I believe the clerk has. And if she doesn't, we can take a quick recess, but she should have. And what I would be asking, Mr. President, is that we pass the new draft and we authorize only $499,000 for the purpose of purchasing these two boats for our police department. If you have any other questions, I'm available. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross moves acceptance of the committee report in a new draft and passage in a new draft from docket 0498. Chair recognizes Counsel Ross.
Yeah, Mr. President, one of my colleagues just handed me an email which had a bid on the 27-foot Brunswick Impact Boat. The, no, I'm sorry, on the 28 Patrol Boat. And there are two bids, and this is what I referenced earlier that just up until a couple of minutes ago I was checking on. Apparently, one of the bids had, of this particular boat, was bid only for the North River Boat, just for an engine. So one of the bids was for an engine, the other bid was for an entire boat. So there was a vast discrepancy in the difference between, obviously, the engine and the boat. So we chased down the matter, talking to, well, this, and this is why I left earlier, Mr. President, talking to the police individual who was in charge of this effort, Sergeant Chevers. And I was informed that it was an invalid bid because they were answering the cost for an engine only and not for the boat. So whatever emails floating around there, I've read, I've reviewed, I've brought back to Sergeant Chevers, and I've gotten clarification and then a further email from Sergeant Chevers as well about that. So I still feel confident that we should move forward. Our other option would be to lose this option. Thank you, Mr. President.
Take a brief recess.
$499,000.
The clerk will just read the amended amount of the docket number that we will be appropriating the funds for.
And the order, which is in the Committee on Public Safety, docket 0498, ordered that the police commissioner, acting on behalf of the city of Boston, be hereby, is authorized pursuant to section 53A of chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws to accept and expend the order of the United States Department of Homeland Security passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security not to exceed, not to exceed the amount of The amended amount for this docket is now $499,000.
Counsel Ross moves acceptance of the committee report as amended with the amount of $499,000. All those in favor of the committee report signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Committee report as amended has passed.
Unanimous consent. Just wanted to make an announcement, Mr. President. Is it too early to do that? Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I just wanted to offer a robust and heartfelt thank you to everyone that supported Operation Prom. We have collected 500 dresses for young people who are in need and cannot afford the cost of prom. I do have to say again, although we are no longer soliciting gently worn donations for accessories and dresses and shoes for the young ladies, we are still in dire need for the young men. I notice with admiration the number of young men in this chamber who are becoming increasingly more svelte with every day. Certainly, you have some suits that you can unload, so we are still looking for suits and tuxedos and accessories for the young men in need. Finally, we will be hosting at Hybernian Hall in District 7 from 9:30 to 4:00 p.m. this Saturday is when we will be giving away all of the prom attire that we have accepted. But it is critical that young people register. We do not want mayhem at Hybernian Hall. So if you know of a young person in need or of an organization that services and supports young people, please let them know to contact our office. They can also register online. We will not hand out anything unless they have registered, okay? And I would also just add, because it wouldn't be a day with Ayanna in this chamber if I didn't talk about something that made people a little bit uncomfortable, we will be having a workshop at Hybernian Hall to talk about this major transition for many teens, that of prom night. And we will have a discussion, offering wellness tips to support people in their self-respect and safety. Read between the lines. Thank you.
I also rise for unanimous consent to make a statement.
Please proceed.
First, allow me to thank my colleague from Dorchester for noticing that I've lost close to 20 pounds since January. Frankly, I rise because, for obvious reasons, the youth jobs hearing that I planned to have on Friday did not happen. We had confirmed to have hundreds of young people here. It coincided with school vacation week, as we all know, but clearly, we couldn't hold that hearing and we all understand and can appreciate why. So allow me to share what we would have learned in that hearing as we go into our budget process. One, that our mayor once again is showing leadership on the issue of summer jobs and youth jobs funding by level funding summer jobs through the city's budget. And for that, I know we are all grateful. However, at the State House, as we speak, they're in the middle of budget negotiations, and we are looking at yet another cut for summer jobs here in Boston. I would ask all of my colleagues to call our colleagues in government at the State House, both members of the Senate, members of the House of Representatives, and even our governor, and ask them to really reconsider those cuts and to not do that, frankly, and to allow us to put our young people here in the city of Boston to work in the summer and year round. Also, at the federal level, you would have learned that it's another battle. Many of you know that on my first year on the Boston City Council, we received $3 million from the federal government towards youth employment, but on my second year, we received zero. My third year, we received zero. I'm looking at our Chair of Ways and Means, and he and I both know that we expect to receive zero this year again. I would ask that you call our colleagues in government at the federal level and express to them to do all that they can. They are allies, frankly, at the federal level, doing this work, but to do all they can to make sure that that doesn't happen. We were able, as a city, to have over 10,000 young people working last summer. We should be proud of that. Per capita, we're the best in the country. And all of us have played a role, not just me, all of us on this council, and especially so our mayor. We cannot run the risk of not doing that this summer. We should use 10,000 as the bottom bar, as the lowest bar. We should always try to be better than we were before. And so I ask all of my colleagues to please put in those phone calls, help with that lobbying effort. You've always, every year that I've been on the council, have been great and supportive and leaders in your own right on the question of youth employment. But that's what we would have learned on Friday, and I just ask that you all join me and join the mayor in continuing this good fight that frankly, I know you all will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. The clerk informs me that there are no late-file matters to the consent agenda. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. Now, if I could ask all counselors and all in the chamber to please rise as we prepare to adjourn. We will be closing in memory this week for the entire membership of the Boston City Council, the four victims of the marathon bombings, Martin Richard from Dorchester, eight years old, Crystal Campbell, Lou Ling, and Sean Collier, the MIT police officer. For Counsel La Matina, Antonetta Di Ambrogio De Paolo. For Counsel Yancey, Donna Clara Daniel. And James Samuel Yancey, Counsel Yancey's uncle. For Counsel Lenihan, Edward D. Clardy Sr., Mary T. Hodges, Joseph P. Manning, Joseph J. Picard Sr., Garfield G. Thomas. For Counselors Connolly and Baker, Gary Thomas Feamy. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again next Wednesday, May 1, 2013, at 12 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Counsel stands adjourned.[1709.82]